Good morning, everyone. I know we have a packed house here, but we have a little bit of a procedural dilemma. While we have a potential quorum of board members here, we don't have an official count of board members. We only have two. We have a third on the way. We can't conduct business or swear in our newest director until we establish a quorum. So, talk amongst yourselves. As soon as Director Ooten arrives, we will start the meeting. I apologize, especially to our newest director. Did you sell tickets? Did you? Anyway, thanks for your patience, everybody. Adam Clerk, are you? I don't get to use the hammer very much, so. I'm going to call this meeting, the study session for September 9th, 2025, to order. I would like to wish all of you a very happy California Admissions Day. Don't look at me like that. Today is the day of the anniversary of the admission of the State of California to the Union, September 9th. And when I was a kid, and I can remember when I was a kid, we used to get a school holiday. So, we didn't have to go to school on September 9th. You don't remember that, Director Wiltshire. Bob was at the swearing-in ceremony at the induction. He knows all about it. Anyway, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Director Nicole Wiltshire, here. Secretary Arthur Perry. Vice President Robert Ooten.
Here.
President Michael Schaefer.
Here. Director Perry has excused reason for being absent. Public comments, this is the time of the meeting where the public can address the Board of Directors on items which are not on the agenda but are still within the purview of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. If you would like to speak, there are green cards back on the table that we'll need you to fill out. And you'll have four minutes to speak. And I'm going to invite Lori. Do you have a last name, Lori, for the record?
Robnett.
Robnett? Thank you. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Lori and I live in District 5. I've also been a friend and neighbor of Arlene Schaefer's for 34 years. I would like to raise a concern regarding the meeting held on September 2nd at 4:30. On that day, I attempted to attend the meeting, but I was locked out. The main doors here were locked. I waited to see if someone would lock them. I knocked a few times. As a result, no one came to the door, and I was unable to make a public comment on the listed agenda item. As someone who does not regularly attend these meetings, I was surprised by this experience, and I'm wondering if this is a common occurrence. Public access and participation are important parts of our community process, and I believe all residents should be able to engage, even if they do not regularly attend or happen to arrive a few minutes late. I respectfully ask for clarification on why this happened and whether steps will be taken to ensure that members of the public are not prevented from participating in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I would tell you that this board shares your concern with openness, transparency. In fact, as a board, we've been recognized by the state for our openness. I will ask the General Manager to address the issue that happened on the 2nd. Scott?
Yeah, unfortunately, that was just a mistake. We had a new employee that, out of habit, locked the door when she leaves the day. We've never locked the door in the public. It's the first time since I've been here in 15 years that we've locked it. But once we learned it was locked, we immediately unlocked it. So, that was just a blue mistake.
Thank you. The second item of public comments, Sue Lester.
Good morning. My name is Sue Lester. I'm the current Chairperson of the Citizen Advisory Committee. However, my statements here today are my own and not representative of my position as Chair or the views of the CAC. I'm here because I believe in integrity, honesty, good governance, transparency, fairness, the accountability of public officials. I pride myself on being direct and upfront with people and want to share several serious concerns I have relating to the actions and/or inactions of members of this board, which may possibly qualify as violations of the public trust and the Board of Directors' oath of office. It is my hope that some of you will be equally concerned and interested in bringing these facts to light and ensure public transparency and accountability. On September 2nd, 2025, a special meeting of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District Board of Directors was convened to appoint a new member to the Board of District 5. I was among those applicants. I am concerned that the proceedings may have been unfairly influenced by a potentially biased member or biased members of the Board. It has come to my attention that less than 12 months ago, Director Wiltshire utilized the services of applicant Cheyenne Wright to direct her election campaign, leading up to and during the general election in November of 2024 for CMSD Board of Directors of District 2. At no time after the agenda- agendized item was announced, did Director Wiltshire publicly disclose her potential conflict of interest or seek direction from District Council. Due to Director Wiltshire's undisclosed political alliance with Cheyenne Wright, she may have violated government code by taking part or influencing a decision for a vote that might be considered prohibited interest under potential political or potential political payback. I'm unsure if other members of the Board were aware of this or if they too were deprived of the information as the public was. Cheyenne was also permitted to submit additional paperwork for consideration outside of what was requested on the official CMSD application. Attached to her application and to her resume was an imitation mock-up petition claiming support for her appointment. Aside from the fact that this quote petition did not follow the requirements of the valid California petition, none of the information was validated to ensure the signatures were legally obtained from registered voters residing in District 5. Albeit very creative on Cheyenne's part, it was extremely misleading, an extremely misleading document that may have given Cheyenne an unfair advantage and should not have been included. If staff made a mistake in permitting this document, it was still the Board's responsibility to ensure an equal and fair appointment process, and in this case, it may have failed to do that. Cheyenne was also asked an additional question by one of the Board members that was inappropriate and that may be deemed inappropriate to ensure an unbiased process. One such question was asked by Director Perry. Quote, "Are you still on the Parks Commission?" After a discussion with possible conflict with District Council, Director Perry stated, and I quote, "I only asked because I'm the golf coach at Estancia, and we deal with the Parks Commission for suggestions and problems. This was a personal issue. Sorry." End quote. I'm concerned that this, quote, "personal issue" may have had undue influence on Director Perry's decision to appoint Cheyenne. Are questions pertaining to an issue that may yield an outside benefit to the personal interests of a Board member proper during what is supposed to be an unbiased interview for appointment to a Board seat? Appointing a new member to fill a vacated Board seat is arguably one of the most important decisions an elected body will make. Considering there were very few comments and zero public discussion by the Board prior to a very quick motion being made by Director Wiltshire, where she appeared to lobby on Cheyenne Wright's behalf, then a quick second by Director Perry, I am concerned that their support may have been personal or perhaps some discussion took place elsewhere out of public view.
20 seconds, Ms. Lester.
I'm sorry?
20 seconds.
For instance, maybe at this meeting for dinner that all the Board members attended on August 28th, 2025. I'm not an attorney, an expert on government code. I don't work for the FPPC in enforcement, and I'm not an investigator for the District Attorney's Office. I'm in no position to make an official determination or judgment if any or all of the Board members did or didn't exercise good faith or transparency on behalf of the public.
That's right, Ms. Lester.
I would respectfully ask the President to continue as it's in, I believe it's in the best interest of the Board, and I am almost finished.
We'll give you 30 seconds.
I intend to forward this information and the other information I've discovered and researched to the appropriate investigative authorities, which is my right as a concerned member of the public. I would hope the members of the Board share, if they share any of my concerns, they bring those concerns forward to the public to ensure transparency and accountability and are interested in, if appropriate, punishment for those who violated their oath to the fullest extent of the law as applied. After all, good governance matters. In closing, please know I plan to continue as the Chairperson of the Citizen Advisory Committee as my term goes through 2027. I remain committed to the success of the Sanitary District and the services it applies, provides. I trust that no adverse reaction or retaliation will be taken against me by any members of the Board, staff, because of the concerns I've brought before you today. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, next, public comment. And if I pronounce it wrong, Adam, I apologize. Mr. Talabas? Is that close?
Morning, President and Board. My name is Adam Talabas. I'm the District Director for Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Katrina Foley. I'm here this morning to give comment on behalf of the Supervisor to congratulate soon-to-be sworn-in Director Cheyenne Wright. I'll, for a quick personal note, I've known Cheyenne for many years. I've seen firsthand her commitment to this community here in Costa Mesa. And, you know, all of her work around the community has been wonderful. So, we're very excited to see her work on this Board for the community. So, on behalf of the Supervisor, on behalf of the County Orange, I want to congratulate soon-to-be Director Wright, and I want to make sure that I can present this certificate of recognition to her from the Vice Chair. She would have been here herself this morning, but there is a board meeting this morning. So, unfortunately, the schedules didn't line up. So, yeah.
You want to give it to her now? Why don't you go ahead and do it now?
Oh, okay.
I think you have a small fan out there, too. That's okay. Let her go. Okay. Seeing no one else from the public or having no other cards, we'll go ahead and close the public comments portion of the meeting. And I guess we'll go to Item C, which is probably why most of you are here. Cheyenne, you want to come on forward? Procedure will matter this morning to swear in newly-appointed Board Member Cheyenne Wright. The Clerk will give you your oath, so come on up.
Just to the podium there.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's the podium. We have to report it.
And Cheyenne, if you'll please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Cheyenne Wright.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely.
And that I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Director Wright.
Thank you.
You may take your seat at the dais.
We have a seat reserved for you at the end of the dais. Okay, do we? We don't need to do roll call again?
We're welcome to.
Roll call, please.
Director Cheyenne Wright.
Here.
Director Nicole Wiltshire.
Here.
Vice Secretary Arthur Perry. I'm sorry, Secretary Arthur Perry. Vice President Robert Ooten.
Here.
President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Again, Director Perry has an excused absence for this meeting. All right, we're going to go to items of study. And I'm sure you're all going to want to be here to go through all of our items of study.
Are we going to do comments if you, at the end?
Unfortunately.
Bye. Thank you. Love you guys.
Don't leave yet. I'm going to diverge from the agenda just a little bit and allow Director Wright to make some public comments. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah. Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you to everyone for being here and for everyone who's not here, who has supported me along the years to get here. I'm extremely proud. I'm really passionate about local government. If you know me, you know that. I know that we normally do these comments at the end, but I also want to say that I feel really confident about my professional background and experience that I am going to do an excellent job in this Board. I also know that I have helped a lot of people in this city get elected and inspired them to be involved. And I think that that's really common because everyone in Costa Mesa that's involved in local government, we all help each other. I also think that it's in bad taste to get up and criticize the Board on this day, and I think it's kind of immature. So, I just want to say that I feel really confident that I have earned this position. And after even watching the interviews, I feel very strongly that the Board made the right choice, and I'm really grateful for that. So, thank you so much for your faith in me. I will not let you guys down.
Okay, now you can all jet out of here.
Bye.
All right. Introduction of new employee?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. John Gonzalez, our Waste Water Maintenance Manager, is going to be introducing Christian Cantero, who is our new Electrical Instrumentation Technician.
I think we should start on linebacking corps or get a football team. Go ahead, John.
Good morning.
Morning.
The esteemed Board and new Board Member. Congratulations.
Yeah.
I'm John Gonzalez, the Waste Water Maintenance Manager, and this is our newest employee, Christian Cantero. He's our Electrical Instrumentation Tech, and we're really happy to have him on Board. He's brought a big skill set with him. I think it's going to be a really good, a good plus for us at Costa Mesa.
All right.
Want to ask any questions? Grill him a little bit?
Student, though, this will probably get you in trouble with all the guys out in the field. You have a great smile, man.
Thanks, man. I appreciate it. Nice to meet you.
You must be happy.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, bud. Glad to have you.
Appreciate it, guys.
Look at that. They're going out the door right, oh, no. Not going to work? We have another new employee. Marissa, I think this one's yours?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, yes, Marissa is going to introduce our, another new employee, Yessenia Rosas is our New Administrative Assistant One in the Solid Waste Department.
Good morning, President and Board. We welcome Yessenia to the District on August 25th, not September 25th, as it incorrectly states in the staff report. But she is our new Administrative Assistant One for the Solid Waste Department. Yessenia will be responsible for day-to-day administrative and customer service duties in the Solid Waste Department, including things like providing support for phone, email, and walk-in customers, monitoring our GoGov service request system, acting as liaison with CRNR for customer service and operations matters, among other administrative duties. Yessenia has a background in nonprofit administration, most recently serving as a volunteer and community outreach coordinator. She also brings experience in customer service and administrative functions within fast-paced, public-facing environments, including her experience as a team lead with Chick-fil-A. Yessenia received her Bachelor's Degree in Human Development from California State University, San Marcos. She's done a fantastic job in the two weeks that she's been here. We're so excited and thankful to have her on Board, and we welcome you to welcome her to the District.
You have just as nice a smile as Christian. Congratulations. We met, and we'll look forward to many years here at the Sanitary District. I got to say, when you see our staff, whether they're working on the California Pump Station, which is the most important pump station in the whole, the whole chain, or you see them in here, they're always smiling. And the respect you show us on the Board, but more than anything, the respect you show the general public is really appreciated, guys, and thank you for continuing to do that. Very proud of you. Okay. I don't see David. Do we have?
Yes, I'm sorry. David is at our leave today, so we'll bring this item back next month.
Any concerns or anything we need to worry about on the report? I didn't see anything major, so, okay. Let's go to Item Study Number Four, the Recycle Coach Education Update.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Marissa Paredo will be giving this report.
Good morning again. As you know, staff presented the Recycle Coach platform to the Board at the August 12th study session. Following staff's presentation and a demonstration by Recycle Coach's Head of Sales, the Board asked staff to provide answers to four additional questions at today's study session. So, first, what would the annual cost be for Recycle Coach with a two-year contract versus the three-year contract that was presented at the August study session? So, a two-year contract would include a 5% premium on the first year, which amounts to $1,033 for the first year in additional costs and $1,065 in additional costs for the second year. And then there would still be the 3% CPI increase between the first and second, which also applies with the three-year contract. The Board also inquired on how many solid waste customers in the City of Glendale are utilizing the Recycle Coach platform. I did reach out to the city to get some information from them. They have approximately 32,000 residential solid waste customers. They currently have a little over 2,300 registered users, and they receive about 2,500 interactions per month. And an interaction is a customer conducting a search, utilizing a quiz or some sort of an educational resource in the platform. When they do their, when they did their initial push to inform the public of the program, they had about 4,500 interactions per month. So, we can see a direct relation between the outreach that's conducted and then usership with the program. Next, will Recycle Coach duplicate outreach efforts of CRNR? So, CRNR does not currently have any comparable programs or outreach that would duplicate the efforts of Recycle Coach. Following the study session last month, CRNR did inform the District that they could develop a What Goes Where tool that they would place on their website at no cost to the District. Following posting of this agenda, so after the staff report was posted, CRNR informed the District that a website tool could take approximately six to eight weeks to develop, and an app would take about six to seven months. CRNR did not have any additional information at the time the report was posted or following the discussion with the timeline. So, we're not sure at this point if there are going to be metrics available to the District or how some of those other questions might be answered that were included in the staff report. Lastly, the Board asked if Recycle Coach would be eligible for SB 1383 Local Assistance Grant funding. And yes, education and outreach is an eligible expenditure. The portion of Recycle Coach that would be eligible for the grant is related to the percentage of the program that covers organics and recycling. So, staff and Recycle Coach estimate that that is between 25 and 50%. So, the grant could potentially cover between 5,400 and a little under 11,000 of the first year of the grant because that grant does, the term does end April 1st of 2026. So, it would only cover the first year of the grant. And then I did have some additional comments. We did receive public comment from Mr. Mosher. Following that comment, I did reach out to both the City of Ventura and City of Irvine. I haven't heard back from the City of Ventura yet, but I was able to get in contact with someone at the City of Irvine. They shared that when they first implemented Recycle Coach about a decade ago, at that time, residents were less likely to download apps or use apps on their phones. And so, at that point, the usership wasn't where they wanted it to be, and so, they did elect to discontinue the program. But following my outreach to them and I shared our Board presentation, I shared Ryan's presentation of the platform. They're actually interested in reevaluating and looking at it. And if we do elect to move forward, they'd like to see kind of what our experience with the platform looks like.
City of Irvine have a three-year contract when they, do you know?
That I don't know. That I'm not sure.
The other, and I'm sorry to interrupt. I hope you don't mind. But the other part of it is, if they did it a dec, Irvine did it a decade ago, which was well before the state's.
Right.
Influence. What kind of collection system did Irvine, did they have a segregated collection system? Or were they like us? They did, Scott?
But, yeah, at that point.
So, they did have recycling, in essence, in effect, or?
I don't know when the organics recycling was implemented, but I believe they had at least two streams at that point.
They had green waste recycling. They had a green waste recycling, but, yeah.
Who their hauler was?
Waste management.
Big Plum in the county and Waste Management gets it? Big Plum, I mean, the biggest city. Sorry, Marissa. Go ahead.
That's okay. So, just kind of following your comment, it seems to be a case of implementing kind of a new technology, maybe a little too early in the case of Irvine. So, staff is still recommending that the Board direct staff to move forward with the Recycle Coach platform under the two-year contract. The pricing for the two-year contract is included in the staff report. And then, following conclusion of that contract, staff can evaluate CRNR's tool. If there is a tool and it's comparable, we can evaluate at that point and look at possibly transitioning from Recycle Coach to CRNR. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Director, is there any questions?
Yeah, the public comment that we got from Mr. Mosher. Is it possible for us to get a competitive bid from Recyclist?
So, I did a little bit of research, and I am familiar with the name Recyclist. And from what I can find, RouteWare purchased Recyclist about two years ago. I did reach out to RouteWare. They have something called the Waste Wizard. We met with them at the same time that we met with Recycle Coach and a third vendor. And RouteWare never provided a quote. So, they were supposed to send a quote following our meeting. We didn't receive that. The third vendor was significantly more expensive than Recycle Coach. They had, I think, a $28,000 annual fee in addition to a $30,000 implementation fee. And so, staff was impressed with the platform, with the Recycle Coach platform, and given the cost of the other vendor and that RouteWare didn't send a follow-up quote. That was why we elected to move forward with Recycle Coach. But as far as I can understand, Recyclist was absorbed into RouteWare, and what RouteWare presented to us was this Waste Wizard. So, I don't know if Recyclist is still available as a separate entity. It doesn't seem to be, but that was the information that I was able to find when I initially researched what programs were available.
Do you know why they didn't follow up with a quote?
I don't.
The $30,000 just to?
It was like an implementation fee, like a startup fee, and then it had a monthly fee that amounted to about $28,000.
Their contract was three years as well?
I don't know if it had a minimum on it. It probably had at least a two-year minimum, the other vendor.
Yeah, I have thoughts. This platform seems really well-built out. They partner with 1,700 municipalities. It does look a lot more user-friendly. I like that it would be used by all of our clients, not just, say, people that are, you know, doing like the application process. And I would like to maybe add some metrics or goals to make sure we're measuring the success of the app and make sure we're achieving whatever, obviously, it would probably be better sorting by customers, right? But, yeah, I like what I see. And I obviously wasn't at the August study session, but if staff is recommending we approve for two years, then I'm in support of that.
We won't take action on it today. It'll come back to the regular Board meeting at the end of the month. I'm going to direct this at Mike Carey. There any, anything that CRNR? There any, anything that CRNR wants to add to this? How do, how does CRNR feel about this kind of thing and what you guys can do to help pay for it?
Morning, Board. Thank you for allowing me to present. We're supportive of any tool that informs the residents of what goes where. I mean, that's all of our promotional and outreach material as well. As staff mentioned, we are developing our own tool that will be on our website within six to eight weeks on our landing page of our website that will have AI functionality of what goes where, and we're, again, developing an app for users to be able to do that. We're doing it company-wide. But I think it could be complementary to what you're doing, or it could be in lieu of.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate you speaking to us. The 1383 funds, are they already earmarked for another program or are they available to help pay for this?
We have some funds that are generally available for education and outreach, and we can submit a request to CalRecycle to move funds from one category to another if we'd like to do that, so that that wouldn't be an issue.
Is that a reasonable thing to do or easy?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Like President Schaefer said, we'll take this up at the board meeting, but I think this is a very, I'm very supportive of this kind of education to the public. The tonnage of recycling has been increasing month by month since we, I think we put out the recycle ban last fall. And I, there's no way that this can't help for the cost. So I'm, I'm very supportive of the project.
No, I think this is a, I think this is a great option. I think that it might be kind of confusing if we had both Recycle Coach and CRNR doing something that residents could access. I think it's probably better to just go with one.
I assure you, concern, that's kind of what's been moving in my mind is, like I had said previously, I don't want to duplicate something we're already doing, so we're going to have to identify to the public that, you know, this is, this is the source for finding out.
Well, one big difference with CRNR's system, they'll be on their website. Recycle Coach will be on our website.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll be easier to find on our website. That's what we'll be telling our residents, to go to our website, so there shouldn't be any confusion.
I think that's helpful. That's good. Okay, then we'll have this at the board meeting. Just other comments? Thank you, Marissa.
Thank you.
Thanks for giving the extra information.
You're welcome.
Much appreciated. Okay, that concludes our items of study. Closing items, oral communications. Any comments from any of the directors? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Glad you could make it this morning. We're so happy to see you.
I don't want to tell you all my different excuses because I really don't have a good one.
Well, we're glad to see your smiling face. Okay, if there's nothing else, then I will adjourn the meeting to our next meeting, which is tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, our joint meeting with the Citizens Advisory Committee here at the headquarters. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Yeah.